December meeting of the McHenry County School Board to order. Tonight, first on our agenda is the, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Come in.
Mr. Gozer. Second Ms. Taylor, all in favor? Next, we have our open, opening devotional. And tonight, I'm reading from a book a friend of mine gave me called Advent at the Wealthy Table. And first, I'll start with a quote from Oprah Winfrey. "What if you took a minute to step away from the noise of the world, the constant bombardment, and go to the still, small interior space where you abide as observer of it all? In the stillness is where peace abounds." The second week of Advent is often associated with a peace belonging shared by people of many faiths and traditions. This season invites us to pause in the midst of the busyness and make space for calm, reflection, and compassion. Peace doesn't always mean the absence of difficulty, but it can be the presence of stateness, patience, and understanding within us. When we slow down, breathe deeply, and choose kindness, we help create the kind of peace our world longs for. I would like to offer you this meditation. May we find moments of quiet that restore us. May peace settle in our hearts and guide our actions. And may we become sources of hope and calm for those around us. Now, I would like for us to have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. And I call on Adrian Ramos and Grayson Eaton to lead this pledge. Next on our agenda is item number two, election of McHenry County Schools' Board of Education Officers for the year ending December 2026. I'll hold on our attorney max for now. I'd like to nominate the winner.
So now we'll accept nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Dr. Rob Lado.
We have a second? Okay, so we'll have a vote by hand. So all those in favor of Ann Evans, please throw it by raising your hand. Vote Dr. Rob Lado. And that's when the board chair gets the vote.
I appreciate the vote of confidence, but I prefer whatever is for the vice chair.
All right, so I'm gonna vote for Ann Evans because she's gonna help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rob Lado.
Don't worry, we'll keep you in some time. All right, moving forward to recognitions. We have Testing and Accountability Awards, Dr. Roseborough and Amanda Eaton.
Normally, we get awards from the Department of Public Instruction, the Regent of our schools for meeting loss or increasing proficiency in their way to know how to work. But we wanted to make sure that we end this school year by making sure that our schools will recognize for their hard work in the past.
The banners are on the way. He's having a double with these printers right now.
I just wanna make sure that the banner.
First up, we have standard elimination. Green is elementary, the one is grade. Not military elementary, the one is grade. Page three elementary, the one is grade. Boy elementary, the one is grade. Eat milk full, the one is grade.
I'm just standing behind Joe.
Congratulations to all of our schools for their hard work this fall. Time to vote for a good pick.
Good job.
Congratulations and thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. And with no one signing up, we will move on. Thank goodness, I don't have to bring out Heather.
I'm sure everyone has known the concept of our Scent Off this year for this holiday season. And we want to make sure that we recognize both the my community's members and employees for their hard work and their vision. And making sure that we brought the end of the season in the right way. And so at this point, I would like to present, we should make things more. For making sure that we feel the holiday spirit this December. They did a fantastic job. All the decorations in the boardroom were handmade by the North family. And then also we got our confetti, which is confetti. Thank you. From Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
It was quiet, like when I walked in, I was like, wow. Yeah, administrative reports, discussion items. So our first one will be Dr. Emily Shaw. Yes, it's our favorite time.
Policy. And I should have presented these. Wait, I'm taking my coat off.
It's warm in here.
So we should have, these actually came down for last month. But last month's agenda was so packed that we decided to go ahead and push them to this month. In your packet or what you could see on your screen were our policies that were up for first read. And I gave you the summary sheet of all the policies that we have along with the note, sort of, I call it what, the Cliff version of all the policies. So I'm gonna take just a minute to go over these to make sure that there are no questions. And remember, a lot of these are the required changes that the School Board Association puts out to align with new state board education policy and new state statutes that come about. Policies 1740, 4010, student and parent grievance procedure. As a required change in the policy, that just puts in some clarifying language when it talks about the open meeting law. And then, of course, along with that, we have to update the cross-reference. 1750, 7220, grievance procedures for employees. Again, a required change as that clarifying language to Section D4 on meetings and hearings being private unless the open law meeting requires something differently. And then it's recommended that we change that cross-reference and delete a footnote that is no longer needed because of the clarifying language that's added in. Policy 2125, 7315, confidential information is a required change that adds new statutory language that prohibits employees and board members from collecting, disclosing, and requiring access to personal information about individuals or contractors, associations, or nonprofit organizations, including the status of donors, members, or volunteers. And then we have to update the legal references because that is a state statute change. And then we have the recommended changes and the information just to update the cross-reference and the footnote. 2127, board member technology. We're gonna add some language to board members using from school system or individual names, logos, and trademarks. And that just helps to put a container on some of that and to help us track who is using what. You know, we may not have access to someone using our logo all the time, but it does represent our school, and we need to control that as much as we can. And although that's just a recommended change, it is one that we do need to think about. 3101, dual enrollment adds language regarding the new career and college ready pathways. That is a required change to reflect the law on college and career ready pathways with the remediation courses. 3220, technology and educational programs, a required change adds a new statutory requirement to Section B to align with State Statute 115C, Section 102, 1-0, concerning evaluation cost in the life cycle of technological resources filed through acquiring. And then there's a recommended and informational change to help integrate it on. 3225, 4312, 7320, technology responsibility use. A required change adds some language in those subsections to accommodate General Statute 115C, Section 102-10, where students are prohibited from access to social media platforms unless directed by a teacher for educational purposes. And then there's, we have to update the legal references because that involves state statutes. Policy 3226, 4205, with internet safety. Again, required, Insection C adds to that same general statute, but implements stronger measures to accessing an appropriate website. And we have to update the legal references as well. 3227, 7322, web page development. It's recommended that we clarify the school system is not responsible for personnel. Websites or webpages created or maintained by members of the Board of Education in addition to those students, employees, parents, groups, or organizations. And this is just with all the uprising of the freedom of speech that has taken up lately. Policy 3400, evaluation of student progress is a required change. Adds new language from a state board of education policy addressing grades assigned to elective courses and non-elected graduation requirements if a student transfers from an accredited or international school. 3460, graduation requirement is required for us to update the science course requirements for the future-ready occupational courses study. 4050, children of military family is required that we now include Space Force identification in the military-connected student and provide a website concerning liaison. 4120, domicile residence requirements. It's required that we modify the language in subsection D4 based on a recent statutory correction. It removes the wording either or. And because that deals with state statute, we have to update the legal references as well. 4240, 7312, child abuse and related threat to child safety. It is recommended that we add language in Section D for involving, for clarity, involving duty to report license to DPI. That's recommended, but we're gonna do anything with reporting those instances to DPI because that protects that student and it protects that student's system. 4270, 6145, concussion and head injury. A required change to the policy adds new requirement that an athletic trainer or first responder attends wrestling matches and tournaments. 5150, 7313, reported to external agency. It's required that we change the language and update it in subsection A2 for clarity concerning reporting offenses to appropriate agencies. Again, it's required because it protects your child. Moves to the center of safer schools reporting requirements to its own subsection, and it's no longer part of the DPI subsection. 6310, organizational support, transportation services. Required changes, we have to add the language to comply to the State Board of Education requirement concerning responsibilities of superintendent in developing policy through 6300 series. And because it deals with State Board of Education statute, we have to update those legal references as well. 7910, retirement. That adds language statement of an employee's retirement allowance is subject to an adjustment pursuant to the contribution-based benefit cap for retirement. The board will not be restoring, responsible for restoring the employee's retirement allowance to the free cap amount unless the board has specified in writing the employee's contract that the board will restore. That is important because we have lots of people that retire, and they come back. It is the employee's responsibility to contact orbit to find out what their path is and how much they are able to work and how much they're able to make. And that just adds that other internal control layer of protection. But it is just recommended though. The other policies only just have minor changes to either the legal reference, cross-reference, or footnote. So I'm not going to read through those because, again, that's just a cross-reference change. Again, there's no action needed tonight. It's just for your review and for you to look through the changes that I talked about on the strikeout policy. If you have any questions right now, I'll be glad to answer it. Or if you think of any, feel free to reach out to me. Um, if you have any questions right now, I'll be glad to answer it, or if you think of any, feel free to reach out to me.
But, yes. Do you have any questions down there? Okay. I had just one question about the, um, having a trainer or someone that is certified for wrestling. Do we not have that for almost all of our sports?
So, yes, but it is not required by DPI or the North Carolina.
Athlete Association. Locally, that we normally have someone like a first responder.
We, I'm gonna, Dr. Roseburg, I, I do not know the answer to that because I'm not the, uh, we should have one.
Cause I feel like basketball is definitely, uh, and I've seen.
Here's part of the problem, the first step won't do it.
Right.
Uh, because it's liability. So I don't know what we got, to be honest.
I do know that we have a, an athletic trainer that we, we do pay at the high school. And I know that we have others that fill in when she has either maximized her hours or she is unable to attend an event. But I think for the most part, the events that they attend are the ones that are required by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And now they're adding wrestling into that, but I'm with you, I think for the most part, all of our high school athletics are covered by that. Um, but now there's a little bit of teeth to it and saying they have to.
I just have some other questions whether or not we have an athletic trainer or first responder that does any matches.
Well, at all of them, wrestling is going to be required, but at all of the sporting events, especially when it's home, it's a home game and somebody gets hurt.
But we have a local policy.
Yeah.
The local, or can we make it a local?
That's the problem, I mean, we're gonna study. This point, uh, so naturally.
A lot of times that is the, um, athletic director. And that role was moved on.
But are the athletes, the athletic director trained in any of that? I bet they're not.
I just want to, uh, student notes, that's all.
It's never been, it's never been required to do that, but I know of in the past, I'm not saying it's not something should be done, but I don't know if it is done.
I can go out and find it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those will be noted on, um, this. All right, so my favorite thing is. Um, first, I would like to thank the calendar committee, we started meeting, um, the first of October. And we have met several times because we all understand the importance of getting out of the school calendar so that way families can plan vacation, different events, and just the, the knowing what, what we're going to do. I will say that, um, Dr. Roseburg has requested that we look at doing calendars two years at a time instead of just one, which is a practice that lots of districts do. So I do think that is something that Montgomery County schools will be doing in the foreseeable future is looking at doing a calendar for two years, um, instead of one, at least having a plan, so to speak. Um, so this year, the calendar committee, we, um, were asked to make two calendars. One is a traditional calendar and one is a modified start calendar. We did a modified start calendar because the modified start calendar is what we did this year. So the modified start calendar, um, on your assembly platform looks almost mirrors the calendar that we did this year with the start date in early August, ending, uh, right before Memorial Day and having balanced semesters with high school exams occurring before we go out for Christmas break with some different allotted work days sprinkled through. Um, Dr. Roseburg wanted some early release dates, um, for some professional development, um, throughout there, so we did those as well. Um, that is what the calendar committee came up with, what we came up with it as the calendar committee. We presented it to Dr. Roseburg for her final stand for approval, uh, made a few more adjustments, and then, um, here we are. The traditional calendar is one that we did not do this year. It is, um, has the traditional start of the Monday closest to August the twenty fifth. It does get out, um, it does get out just a little bit, uh, like tomorrow's notes here. It does have, um, a little bit later date with an end date of June fourth. Your semesters are going to be balanced, but your testing is going to be after the Christmas break on the traditional calendar. Um, the preferred calendar from the calendar committee is going to be the modified start date calendar. Um, and that, uh, a few reasons, one, they liked the, the balanced semester, they liked the testing before the holidays, and they wanted something consistent because we, last year when we were going through this process, they got this shortened summer because we got out the first week in June somewhere around there, but we started back the first of August. Um, so Dr. Roseburg, um, and I worked together, we, um, came up with the idea, actually she came up with it, I just put it out there, um, to do, I won't take her, her glory, um, to do a survey, um, for the community. And also, even though we met as the calendar committee and the job of the calendar committee is to, you know, we meet, we go over, they take it back to their school, they get the input. But this also gave them a chance, you know, maybe they kind of felt pressured, you know, and didn't want to tell the calendar committee, "Rab, I don't like that," or "I think we need to do this, that, or the other." So this opened up an avenue to let them give, um, additional feedback. I have those survey responses for you and I will put them up on the board as well. Um, so out of the survey, um, we posted both calendars, the traditional calendar and the modified start calendar. And the survey was available for staff, students, parents, and the community. It was available in English and Spanish, we had it open from November twenty fifth to December fifth, uh, through the website via a pop-up announcement. So every time you would hit the website, it would pop up to you. We had a hundred and twenty-four responses to the questions of, "I'm answering the survey as," um, either a K five teacher, a six twelve teacher, school staff, non-teaching role, district-wide support staff, parent, student, or community partner. And you'll see that, um, most of our participation came from parents, which is really good because that was what we were striving to do, we wanted to get their input as well. We had seventy six, um, seventy six staff, thirty-five parents, ten students, and three community partners, um, respond to all of that. And I say seventy-six staff, that is combining the K five teachers, the six twelve teachers, and the school non-staff, so putting all three of those bits together. Um, when asked which calendar do you prefer, seventy seven point four percent preferred the, uh, calendar A, the modified start. And, um, asked the question, because this was a discussion that Dr. Roseburg and I had, um, had a lot, is talking about the, the first semester high school exam, um, is it important to have those prior to a winter break, even if it means a shorter first quarter? Uh, because if you remember, three years ago, we had the innovative calendar where, you know, we had the, the traditional start date. We were, um, still out a little later, but we had those exams in before Christmas break. Um, so we, we looked at that, the calendar committee was not fond of, of that, uh, traditional calendar because they did not like having about fourteen days shorter in the first semester. So that's why we developed the conditional and the modified. But we still wanted to know, is that an important factor to you when we have exams? And you will see that, um, it is seventy six point six percentages of it important to making sure those exams occur in the first semester before, um, winter break. Um, so comments, there were numerous comments. I condensed some of the ones that just repeated themselves over and over. You know, you have those outliers, you know, like, "Hey, it was during the off Thanksgiving break," you know, I didn't include that on there because that, you know, again, it's a great idea, but it's not realistic. So the ones that I saw over and over again was they preferred a modified calendar. But I will say, the reason that was given for the modified calendar showed up, the, the cycle that showed up was one, to make sure those exams were prior to Christmas break, and two, for the consistency of it. They feel like, hey, we gave up our summer last year, we want to make sure we're on that same cycle again. They do not want to switch back and forth. Um, they also liked the, um, the modified calendar because it would be, it would be in line with, um, the, um, early college and MCC, um, very much. And you have, you know, siblings, it, childcare, transportation, all the things showed up on that survey is why they really appreciated our calendar aligning with the early college. Um, there were lots of logistical suggestions, they wanted the color of the calendar changed, they wanted the verbiage looked at. And that is something that Dr. Roseburg and I talked about was, what are we going to call those required workdays? What are we going to call, you know, the optional days? Because there, there was some discrepancy in that and, um, we need to make sure that we're communicating to our teachers, you know, what, uh, are you going to be doing on those required workdays? Are you going to have a district-wide staff development that day? Or is that a day where you can plan conferences? So once the calendar is set, Dr. Roseburg will work with, um, HR, the rest of the calendar committee to make sure that those days are communicated to the teachers because that was a huge important factor that was very important for the teachers. Um, I would like to see a fall break implemented with the early start because, um, in discussion with the calendar committee, they did say that when we start so early in August, round about October, you know, it's like we need a, a break. We do have a day in there, but you know, they would love it if you could get, you know, a two or three day break. Unfortunately, that's not as easy as it sounds just because we want to make sure we are maximizing our instructions to get us out of that local form of the saddle. Um, but I will let the board look at that and, you know, you think it's, um, you know, worth putting in a couple extra workdays, we can certainly inform that. But those are up for your view, it's up, you know, for the public's view, it'll sit for, uh, around thirty days and we'll vote on it in, um, in January at that board meeting on which one you want and if you want to see any changes.
Yeah, anyway, let, let me ask you two questions.
Sure.
One, you know, we were getting some kickback from the state about modified calendar. Is that going away? Or it's just, they haven't done anything, anybody's heard?
But I, I went to conference, it's still on the table.
Okay.
And, you know, they're still looking at it.
We do this, you know, we may or may not.
That's why we have a team so they know that we're doing our due diligence.
I got you.
That, we, we're not intending to break the law and to.
Yeah.
This is what I can be.
Second question is, how many parents replies did you have?
We, four. Uh, thirty-five.
So out of four thousand students, we only had thirty-five parents reply.
But that, but that aligns with the, the number of survey results that we, we typically have. So of all the surveys we send out for different things, that's about the response we get.
Well, and, and I'm not saying it doesn't, like, my concern with being, that tells me we don't have that many parents going to our website.
Actually, they got a call.
Yeah.
Oh, they did, they still didn't respond.
We did our big.
Okay. Okay. That's just, that's a.
That is on the webpage.
That's a very low.
And so I did bring the Dr. Shaw's, um, attention that said, you know, most districts, we have ten days for public comment.
Right.
So we did have it out there for nine and a half.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm not saying that we did anything wrong, I'm just saying that's.
How can we get more?
Yeah, I can get more participation. The law still out there where they can tell us if they'd like.
If they would like.
Have we heard of any other schools that have already, uh, dawned route? The early, okay, so they've already approved early.
I mean, you have some, you have some school districts that, that do. And you have lots of school districts that still do that, the innovative calendar where they start that Monday closest to the twenty-fifth. They, uh, finish up at Christmas and they just accept that their schedule is going to be fourteen days, um, shorter. And then you have some that just do the old-fashioned traditional way of starting the Monday closest to the twenty-fifth and get out like June. It's everywhere.
We appreciate all the work that went into this, for sure, I know that this is, uh, a lot of work, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Thank y'all.
Appreciate your hard work. And so we, we're a pleasure.
Cheers, buddy.
And you, will you be here for that dinner meeting? So we appreciate everything you have done.
Thank you for us.
Thank you.
He's going to leave, leave, leave him there for us.
No, it's been all the hard work.
I don't blame you.
But that's why I wanted to make sure it was all, you know, tied up me to say, hey, you know, it should be, you know, you should be able to prove which one you want.
Right.
And even if you want to go with the modified one, because dates put some teeth to it being, you know, hey, that's not what you need to do because that's breaking the law, you will have the traditional one ready to fall out of.
I'm just teasing, thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, our next item is the finance report and I'll call on Michelle for a second.
Good evening. We're going to start with this corrected amendment that's in your packet, I just wanted to briefly talk about that. Um, when I was working on budget amendment two and going back over one, um, I discovered a typo in the, just the cover letter, which is highlighted there at the top. Um, the numbers, I'll blow it, the numbers on everything that you signed are correct, I just wanted to be transparent with you, you know, that there was a typo in that, um, dollar amount that should have, um, been the total of all of those combined. Um, and I did get that corrected and I just wanted to give that and present it to you again, so that you have that. And then you have a second budget amendment, um, for this, for this period through revisions and allotments. And we were able to increase the total, um, budget to ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for this amendment period. Um, this was through an increase in state funds, federal funds, capital outlets, and a special fund of, which is where the grant, um, is. And that's, um, that's all I have for this month, it's part of your packet now, if you have any questions, look up the afternoon.
So those are almost at the end of the evening after we come down.
Correct?
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next we'll move to facility and operations up there with Mr. Ling.
Good evening, ma'am chair and ladies and gentlemen on the board, Dr. Roseburg. I hope y'all are having a good evening this evening. And I don't know what I'm going to get my little link over here and I hope somebody takes over that thing. So anyways, we're starting, we had, uh, issued out a survey on custodial staff. We had six of our principals reply and I believe you've got that data, he's a good one, and I appreciate that. Just jump in there and slide this thing on. So anyway, if there's any questions about that, we, we can discuss it or, or if you got any, need to email me or text me, just let me know, we'd be happy to reply to any question. We're going to open up our current staff level. Man's going to help, help out an old guy, I love it. Uh, this, uh, we reviewed during our work session, uh, a few weeks ago and we've had some changes since then, I believe Montgomery Central has lost another full-time position, so we brought, um, Wesley Manger in, uh, Triple Manger, we getting ready to get married soon, so if you know Wesley, congratulate him. He's trying to work a little extra, save up money for his wedding. Uh, West Middle School, actually Ella came back in, I believe she's got a new knee along with a new hip, so she's good to go now. Star is still a vacant position, so there, I believe that position's on, uh, consent agenda, not fully reviewed. And unfortunately, Mount Gillie is still, is running a vacancy, so she's running about thirty-five percent of her staff, so it's challenging now with Mount Gillie. Uh, next slide. So, uh, overall for the system, we're seeing our staffing levels are lower on the CAFO level, I think we're running about six lower than what CAFO told for. Uh, one of the challenges we've always had, we've never had a central supervisor. Now, I can't all supply material, but as far as directing work at, at the school building level, it's always been on the principal who has a lot of other duties, assistant principal that they have, so they'll share that around them. Um, during the day, it's difficult cleaning, I mean, if you've ever been a teacher, you know, it's very difficult to help the studio and you're, you're always busy, even during the planning session. So I remember the building was always kind of bussing about stuff, but we always got along with them. Uh, training, uh, training's been very tough for us, we usually get one of our vendors to do it during the summer. Now during this last summer with that. Now during this last summer with that new calendar, we only had, I think it was seven weeks um, of summertime. We went straight from school into summer school and it's very, very difficult to pull them out during a short summer. So they were all a little behind getting floors whacked. So this last summer, we didn't do any training with them. And if you look through the survey, training mentioned a couple of times from our, our principals. Um, we've always, when you sit down, hire custodians, you know, with the dual enforcement requirement and an evil bus drivers. It's very, very difficult sometimes. So if you could get somebody that's really experienced cleaning and is excited to clean. But as soon as they find out they got to drop school bus, no way. Looking at a man wouldn't drive a bus. There's no way. Uh, medical issues, we've had a couple custodians right now that are still have medical issues that prevent them from driving. So you, you know, we, we just have to work with that when it comes up. Uh, recommendations, operational challenges, we are right now suggesting that we change our starting salary for the two high school positions, which right now, now free in the one elementary school position, which is Mount Gillis. And these would be evening shift positions, but just possibly we'll increase in pay so we can get them in at evening times when the building's more open. Uh, we are right now looking, reviewing, should we start a custodial supervisor position? We'll start paying thirty-seven five. And uh, hopefully we'll be able to steal one from more of our principals. I know there's one on YouTube right now, the sweating bullets. I will go over there and steal their perfect from them. But we do have some very good custodians that would make great supervisors. So I mean, there's, I can think of three right off the top of my head. So I'm, I'm assuming that some of them would apply for that job or we could look at somebody experienced outside of the town. Uh, anyway, this pay dividends through training, oversight, increase level of accountability and hopefully cleaner facility. Uh, this position would also fill in as they needed, like with the sub positions. Right now, we've got Stephanie working here and she's filling in. She was filling in East Middle yesterday. She was down Mount Gillis last week. And if the star thing works out, we'll, we'll move them around. Uh, but I think the Mount, uh, East Middle thing worked itself out, I'm hoping. Uh, down at the bottom, they're suggesting a minimum hourly rate of sixteen oh seven, this is a little increase from that fifteen dollar starting pay. So we've got uh, we're proposing some increases into our budget. Uh, some of our challenges for operational challenges, right now the biggest one we have is HVAC position. You know, we lost both our HVAC positions last year. And I'm going to really take my hat towards Danny Parks and Alan Lethner who stepped up and really filled in for us. So with the use of some subcontractors, we've been, we hired out Wallace Dunn a couple of times and then we brought JCI in a number of times to the high school when the children were down. We'll also have training kind of locked in the store because that's a trained chiller. They're on a service contract. And then we've got a couple of the old carrier recip chillers that uh, can be challenging someday. So we talked to carrier and JCI. JCI's been able to fix a couple of issues for us. So as far as pumps, Alan has really stepped in and we've started using uh, London Garrett was one of them and Matt Marshall, I believe, was the other that came in disintending one of our, our boilers. That was burning a lot of oil last year. So we're tracking oil right now. Hopefully that will, will slow down after this week. So we went through a lot of overpages last year. Uh, we're looking at some possibilities of state increasing additional state transportation funds as um, we're reporting back to the yellow bus mileage. As you know, the yellow bus has blown good states. So you have to do some reimbursement from local to state level uh, when you use those things such as field trips. Uh, next slide please. Recommendations to the operational challenges. Uh, right now, this is for information only. So you just let you guys have some additional speaking or, or talking and reviewing some data. And I'm sure Michelle will start uh, putting together some budgets so we can take a look at what we're doing with that. And like we say, we're looking at the evening custodial positions would be exempt from bus drivers. So hopefully we can attract some people, get them in quickly. I know Keisha, I don't know if she's still here, she's gone this year. I know she'd love to hire somebody today. And so it's been very challenging for Ms. Keisha down there the last few months. How long have you been gone? Four months now, five months, almost five. So hopefully we can get somebody very quickly. And then at that point, you guys would need to revisit the policies on the door and policy on how we. So next slide. There sure is, we go, that's what we think. Man, the killer. Man is fault. Man, we done it then, right?
Yep.
We're done. You got, we're done. We're done. Is there any question?
Let, let, let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I've been on this board sixteen years. I never heard of CASBO or what, whatever the heck.
That's, that's the end of the last meeting. California School Board Association, their business model, there's like the, like HES presented the AAP. There's just several different ways that facility directors or cleaning companies analyze building space. So it says CASBO was one that California used and I liked it because it puts in ADM, which is uses your paper goods. So if you're looking at just square footage for cleaning, you would look at things like wax and your chemicals. So from the chemical or the supply side of things, it helped me because it, it kind of averages out what I allot to the school. So we're, we're giving a fixed budget, like I'm giving a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. So I allot this out to each of the school members. So they're sort of responsible for their own budget and they'll order like you running a store. So I'm trying to rotate stock and keep things going. So my hat's off to you on that one because I've never been able to do it. Um, so anyway, the CASBO model puts in ADM, number of teachers, number of classrooms. So it has a people side to it to where it balances out better for me on paper towels and toilet tissue and things like that. Now the AAP model or AAAAP uses straight square footage and task cleaning like you would analyze again this space. So when I'm at coffee, you wipe it down so many square foot of this or how you going to clean this board of this, this thing here? And so you actually measure time, you know, function and you put together, you know, a certain level of cleanliness. How often are they going to do it? Is it going to be a daily function one week? So you look at the building in that aspect. And it gets a little more detailed because you have to really know what you got, how many paper towels spencers, how many toilets you got, how many sinks you got. But you really have to sit down and analyze the bill. So there's two models, one that works quicker for me and it gives me a people model and the more elaborate model, HES.
Right.
There's more of a suggestion. Doesn't mean we have to go.
No, it's not like in a one hundred percent.
Yeah.
There are various things coming out of California that I would.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't agree with you on that, but we won't start that.
Yeah. So, but anyway, I mean, that's what I was wondering. I'd never heard it before until this last presentation for a month or two months ago.
Yeah, I would say I found that online when Amanda was helping me out. I actually did that one on my own. So we got pretty good. Any other question? And I do want to thank the board members that went to our, our field trip the other day. We toured Ashboro City Schools, Ashboro High School, which is really fun. It was, it's a nice building. It was very clean. I thought it was very nice and so I think HES is doing a really good job there and I think their staffing, didn't they say eleven? You know, they said they had eleven coming in, three in a day, seven.
They're terrible at night that I thought was a worst thing.
And I think the night thing's really working well. We walked in a few bathrooms, locker rooms and, you know, they were typical youth during the day.
Yeah, but they didn't smell.
They didn't smell.
The locker room did not smell at all.
So you want to tell them the long range point, like what we're, why we're going to start with this?
Oh, we're going to start with this. So well, it's all becomes budget matters, what it's going to become in the long run. So you're going to have to analyze your, your pay and your supply line against what HES will provide. And if, if this option, you really need to start putting some people in the building. I mean, because the high school's running literally two stadiums right now. And they've been running a long time like that. Um, Mount Gillis been running one for a while. So we have really got to start addressing each need, just start showing the building. And so Stephanie, like I said, I'm jumping her around. I've actually sent ground keepers out a couple of times. Um, one thing I'd love to take care of is the outside of Montgomery Central. I don't know why our kids put trash in. I thought they'd be more environmentally conscious, being as young as they are. I think they would put trash in the bins, but they don't. So we're going to have to analyze that site. So every time we drive, fill it up, just won't stop, start picking up trash and done it myself and it took like four hours to do it one day. So it's uh, it's time involved, but right now our, our critical needs are the high school and Mount Gillis. So we, we really need to move ahead with something in a nighttime cleaning position. I think that's the other way to go. I think it'll work well. It's just you'll have to get into supervising and the past allotment. So somebody has to lock their pass where the supervisor is. So custodian supervisor would really help out. But, but let me ask a question. If we got students throwing trash out there, why in the super synopsis, why the principal raising change? And then suspending, you know, making them, making them lock and pick it all up.
I remember in days I used to pick up a little pop that would stick. Of course, I was always a little troublemaker back then. You would push your thing. So I mean, that, that also needs.
Well, I, what I'm going to guess and I'm going to look at the numbers, it may be hiring a company to come get parking lots cleaned. So I think what's going on, it happened in the parking lot and then it, wind or environment takes it, either water takes it into the drain system. Because we were cleaning out drains off down into retaining ponds. We were actually down there chainsawing, mowing. There's a lot of trash going through our stormwater system. So we were picking that up. But I, I think what's happening is getting the parking lot and blowing over onto the other side of the road. So.
Do we have cameras in this parking?
We do. Uh, we do. We do. They're not a hundred percent covered on it from Brian's, done about as best as we can with the number he's got. I think some of that.
Questions to kind of way up, review some of those cameras and see, you know, if each of us is throwing trash out when you go to the car.
Yes, uh, well, that would become a, a very distant problem with intent, I, I think. And probably where we're going with that, that's, that's really, I just know it's there. It loves to get picked up.
Do we have a tent that speaks to the students or family or something like that? That would be a time I had a little.
That would be a, that would be a, unless it seems that'd be. Like you said, that'd be your principal. You saw it on the bill up there.
No, I never told them.
I've heard Mr. Dale get kind of loud on that before, so.
Yeah. I just, it would be nice to address it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mays, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I, I see here that because we're short staffed in HVAC, we're subbing that out. As we're short staffed with custodian positioning, have we thought about subbing that out? I know you're looking at addressing it on an evening standpoint, but could we hire a company to come in on the weekends? And looking at the principal survey, some of the, like the gymnasium areas, the office area, that maybe the classrooms and the restrooms take precedent every night for students to come in the next day? That we maybe sub out a company to come in on the weekends with the upcoming holiday break when students aren't there? So those custodians that are already running things have like a breath of fresh air when they come in on Monday morning?
That's not saying I did.
That, that's what um, HES wants opposed to us starting out like.
Well, I understand that and I remember the budget implications with HES. But in the meantime, are there local, like a local Wallace and Dunn, but that specializes in commercial cleaning that we could hire to bring in over the weekend?
We might certainly start looking at that.
Man, at least, at least look into it.
We are open um, to their.
I mean, we've worked with.
There were just a couple that we were not fond of, that we had heard people had issues with.
Yeah. And until we make a decision with HES, that's something to help.
Trust me, I look, I don't think there's anybody local.
No, there's no, I don't think there's.
But there might be somebody in Greensboro that prefers something that I just talked to last week, we're having problems. It's a company we used to use to clean our floors, buffers and stuff like that. That they just don't speak. So we're trying to find somebody different. It's, oh my God, it's like pulling teeth.
Yeah, a lot of them stay dead because it's really hard. Once they get their clientele set up, they really don't want part-time worker or temp or who work.
Phil, have we thought about um, part-time custodian?
Custodians per day or night.
We, what we're talking about here is full-time.
Yes, sir. Those are filling positions we've got open right now.
Part-time, you don't, you don't run into the vacation pay and all the other stuff.
Twenty-nine hour. And that's where we approached that with the sub program that we're doing right now. So we've got um, four subs to keep running right currently. So um, you know, three of them are ex-studians. We got Gary Marshall back. We got Deborah Robinson came back. Milk Horn's back and you know, Wesley has worked part-time with us before. So those four right now are engaged in Star and, and Montgomery Central. So you know, once we start hiring in their full-time replacements, we'll move those to sell the vacant positions. But, and we may be able to continue using them at, I want to know if we can most certainly approach that, just to see if they'd be interested in.
So at this moment, we're putting HES on hold. Is that what this is? We're going to try to do our own version of.
Yes, ma'am. As far as approaching a custodial training, yes, ma'am. It should be a better. And I'm sure Michelle and Dr. Roseborough can provide us more detail, budget for you.
Are we going to look as nice as they look?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you going to look, are we going to look as nice as they look?
We look. It, it did look nice.
It looks very nice.
We, we said that we would, we'd be maybe in March, April. When we got eligibility for at least ninety-one.
Before it's due.
Once we did these folks and we know better about our budget.
Notice.
Yes, sir.
I put you on the spot.
We have a standard.
We, we get our fair share of it, particularly at the high school. They, for some reason, they love paragons and swings down. Uh, I never figured that out, why they want paragons and take a little bolt out. So we've locked hiding back, want to put them in. So we, we purchased that. They, they hate soap spencers. I don't know why. They just, especially the boys, they like to rip soap spencers down. I don't know. It's, that, that's I've thrown what happened in a little balance club. They, they just like take it out of the soap spencers. So we spent like all summer replacing every one of them. And I'm curious how many are left. I, I need to get a count because we only had two left and the boys resting. So the girls, I, they, they love soap. They, they don't understand. But we, I mean, we get our fair share. It's nothing different than any other county. Every time we beat up maintenance directors, it's pretty much same thing. Maintenance directors right now are communicating about HVAC needs because it's a statewide issue right now. It's not just Montgomery County. But we get, they get shortage of the bus drivers, just like that. So but as far as vandalism, I'll probably say it's just part of the business, to be honest with you. But we don't want it looking like prison. There's some days I would just love to cut all stainless steel, fold everything down, but it, it wouldn't look right.
Senator Blaine's got a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one more question. I don't know if this necessarily for you or just for us to consider, but I'm looking at one of your slides. When you talk about uh, increasing the hourly rate for bus drivers to sixteen dollars. Um, that's quite a liability for someone to take on for sixteen dollars an hour. I mean, I did a quick search and I could get an entry level production job right here in town for way more than that. And I don't have that liability of transporting people's kids around. And so I don't know, I know there's a much bigger budget implication, but I can tell you, I mean, I can go flip burger at a fast food restaurant for more than fifteen dollars an hour. And so I just think that's something that we really need to take close look at, the budget implication.
We're the most paid in our, in our area. Um, my original recommendation was seventeen dollars an hour. So that we're in between those that are willing.
So like the bus driver?
Yeah, but our financial consultant came up with the sixteen dollars an hour based off of what we can afford right now. So if we were to do something right now, we can increase to that and aspire to get up to.
Which is step in the right direction, but I just think.
And we do have several.
For what you're, you take home.
But it works for us, it works for us.
Because you're right. I mean, some people, I mean, I think twenty bucks an hour.
Yep, walking in, yep, twenty-two dollars an hour.
So, and it's difficult. I mean, a bus is what your third largest vehicle on the road next to a truck, you know, concrete truck. And all our own roads don't have shoulders. So I've driven the dump truck sometimes and I don't like doing it, to be honest with you. So I, my hat's off to our drivers. They're, they're really great people. They're professional, um, lovely guys and they do a great job for us. It's just been difficult getting subs to please in, getting people that want to drive full time. But anything we can do to, to that, we would, we appreciate it. Any other question?
Well, definitely keep that on the radar, radar, because I thought of it later because I do think that that is very important.
I have a question. Can you have bus drivers without them having to be custodian?
Yes, ma'am. We do have full-time bus drivers. Since I'm sure exactly that's, I don't mean. I know, and I, I know right off one of our EC drivers that drives all day, stays full time. And then we have some that just part-time workers that drive school buses that don't do anything else.
But if you're a custodian, you have to be.
You have to, that's part of the board policy and have to drive if you're full time.
And the teachers.
Run. Which can make it challenging to fill those positions because I mean, you can get into an interview and seeing you bring up bus dial and you, you, you can see it in your eyes. And they, when you call up the applicant, they, it's challenging someday.
I just want to point out too, to that point about the teachers, that's our teaching pipeline. Um, so if they're on the school basis where we're doing training for early readers and everything, it's impacting speed and safety. So it's definitely something we're going to need to revisit in the near years about updating the policy so that we have all the options available.
There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you, man. I'll put you in soon.
All right, next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction with uh, Mr. Almond. All right, next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction with uh Mr. Almond.
Thank you. So I will have sidebar conversation as I walk by. Um, thank you, Ms. Epps, um, Ms. Dr. Roseberry and board members. Um, this might be the shortest presentation y'all have ever seen from me, unless y'all have a lot of questions. It might be a shocker, but uh there is a memo, I'm not gonna bring it up for confidentiality sake because we do have student names on here. Um, but tonight we have sixteen kids that have applied for early graduation. Um, they are listed on that memo in uh in assembly for YouTube review. Um, all of these kids have had a thorough transcript um audit and they all meet the requirements. Except for one note on one child that y'all can see that's noted there. Um, who is currently not passing that class and we are praying that he passes it before um the time comes. Um, and that's the only issue with transcripts. We do have a new application process this year. And so we have seen some of the applications have a couple issues that we're working with the guidance council to make sure they're corrected. To finalize all the paperwork aspect, um, but all of these kids do meet the requirements to graduate with a North Carolina high school graduation. Does anybody have any questions?
So they're all graduating from December?
Yes, and they have already been talked to about not being able to participate in spring activities and all of that. They've been, they've been read all that information, so.
If they get to graduate in their.
They they are allowed to walk, they just can't participate in anything else other than walking on graduation. But they will officially be graduated in if in the campus effective uh once grades published for the fall semester.
Well, they don't know.
He has some questions.
All right, thank you. That was short, don't you?
Now we have Ms. Deaton with our fourth, first quarter data review. I saw lots of pretty colors on this earlier when I looked at it. It's gonna be even um, um, members of the board this evening. Um, I have our first quarter data review. We are just about ready to start our second quarter data review. And we had a full agenda the last time, so we had to move this one back a little bit. But we are ready to share some of our um data with you and some high point celebrations we have here. I am gonna take you through each grade level, reading, math and science one, two, um, just show you where our check-in data lies. And then the focus area in the middle will be the standard that we asked these teachers to go back and reteach since some time. I'm really focusing on this standard because that's where we were the weakest on our check-in data panel. So third grade math, um, it is a little small see here, I apologize, but um twenty-nine percent. Across the board, it looks like they're just about, and then um. On the bottom, we have the actual breakdown of all of the standards there. We have the topics at the top and then the standard breakdowns at the bottom. So um at the, just for example, the top measurement and data, the bottom, the M D three would belong to the topic of making them available, obviously.
So what am I looking at? Twenty-nine percent of what? They passed?
They are, they are twenty-nine cent, twenty-nine percent proficient in that area.
Grass with metal.
Yes.
Okay, so third graders on average are twenty-nine percent proficient.
Across the board, right, as an average, that's where they were for the first quarter check-in. And then here's your reading data. Um, you're gonna see that as a focus area, R I um H is the focus area for several grade levels. So we know that that's an area that we really need to hone in and focus on. And sometimes you know that the wording changes just slightly from grade level to grade level. It's a um a standard that is kind of built on top of each other. We just need to do a better job with that each time.
So just a question, uh, where should they be at the beginning of the year? What's our? Is it like a twenty-five percent since we do?
Well, so this is not a like a B O Y, M O Y, E O Y. This is just a, here are, here are all the standards for third grade here. We're gonna test you on these for the first check-in, we're gonna check you on these for the second, and we're gonna test you on these. So it's really like apples to oranges because they're, they're maybe testing different standards each time.
You'd like to see them as fifty percent. Right, it tells us how well our teachers are teaching, not how well I see it for one. How well are our teachers teaching that concept?
Fifty is the goal.
Fifty should have been the goal for first quarter, you know, um, we wanna be halfway there, but we're not. And so we have identified, looking at the test specifications, what's gonna be carefully weighted on that E O G. And Miss Deaton pulled those out and said, this is what we need to be here. Now, we will figure when we went out to the learning walks, they are revealing this information, which made us very happy to see. And they were giving kids authentic feedback about where they went wrong and what they needed to improve on. And they're pulling links, they saw how they performed on these.
So with twenty-one points lower than we need, it was supposed to be in math. And nine points lower than was supposed to be in reading, reading fifty percent too.
Almost fifty percent on those concepts.
Okay.
Right now, we're just assessing them on concept.
Okay.
You mentioned that this is not like the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. How does the state determine the timing of these check-ins?
The state gives us windows, we do use for check-ins, and then it's a local decision when to plan those out. Um, and we plan them out, kind of looking at the pacing guide, check-in data, and then we also have common formative assessments that we leave in there as well. So teachers will have an amount of time to teach, we'll do a common formative assessment, which comes from I Ready. Just gonna be kind of like a check-in point to see where they are. And I designed the I Ready assessment based on the standards that are going to be tested on the check-in. So that the teachers will know where they are, where they need to do a little more work. They have a few more weeks to put in that work and then they take the check-ins. And then they know that there's a new set of standards to teach for the next check-in, and so their pacing guide should align with that. We align the the C F A's, the assessment, the the check-in to our pacing guide. Or we we align our pacing guide to those standards, yes.
And I think that was, might be gonna be my question, so the check-ins, we do know what standards are gonna be on the check-ins?
Yes, North Carolina D P I provides all of those standards for us, um, and so we align all of our instructions with that.
Okay, it's not a surprise, R I eight is on that one, it, you know it's gonna be.
Right, just like the E O G, they give us the test specs for that and they might say, you know, forty-eight percent of your math test is going to be on numbers and operations. And they give you that breakdown, they kind of give us that for check-ins as well. So it's not a surprise.
No, and historically, R I eight is a surprise.
Yes, thank you for that background.
Thank you.
And so I'm, I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but I know you have the slides. Um, but I, I will answer any questions that you have. We have fourth grade math here. We're kind of across the board, we were in the thirties, uh, mid-thirty percent proficiency for those.
They were teaching geometry in the third grade, I think it's in the fourth grade.
Yes, sir. It'll be, it may not be in a complex geometry.
Right.
But they're learning those basic foundational skills so that they can build on that. So when they get into high school math and have those geometry standards embedded in there, they'll have their foundation.
It's just a new concept.
Yes. Yes. A few years ago, all of those standards kind of went further down the line, I'll say. I was in the classroom then, and so a lot of those standards that might have been taught in middle school before got pushed down to elementary school. So we're now teaching standards at a different level and we're having to kind of hone that around for a fourth grader. Figure out how to make that work for a fourth grader.
The fifth grade went really well, and then the sixth grade, and it drops again.
The fourth grade reading was fifty-one percent, which is what we're looking for, that's really good. Fifth grade math was fifty-five, that's great.
And then we're gonna talk at the end and we'll give you some time to go through these, and then we're gonna talk at the end for our opportunities for improvement, our our celebrations and then our next steps.
They knocked it out. Yes, it's strange, stumble.
For the biology, is that? Eleven times?
We leave it to unlimited, yeah. Tip rate at the early college.
That doesn't include the early college and the.
Yes, because you are only testing biology this semester, so that their biology is figured into this. They don't have any um English two, math one and math three yet.
Oh, they don't?
No, they did take the check-in for their year long, so it should be back into this as well. But they won't take those exams this semester, so it's a year long, so they'll take it.
You go with math, huh? Yeah. All across the board there.
We found a balance teacher.
Math three is for the, uh, uh, junior or senior. Even people biology, that one.
That's with the early college.
Oh, this is the early college.
It combined.
Okay, English two is fifty-four.
It's on this, it's okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move along. You know, we talked about the fifty percent, it's kind of a, a line where we would like to get to this year. So this year we created the fifty percent club. We just needed a way to kind of celebrate some successes along the way. So I think you guys have been back where you were when we put them up. Um, we've been back in the staff development room, I have uh put our like uh signs up there, certificates for different schools that reached fifty percent. Or the districts, you know, reached it in this standard or something like that. So trying to get that fifty percent club, we've had several teachers to reach that, we've got some good feedback on that back there. Um, we have created several partnerships um with uh D P I and other, others friends that have come in and helped us out. The learning walks with us or provided professional development for us. Um, we've had uh math PD with Dr. Lyons from D P I. Um, Erin Leach has come in and done some K two E L A uh PD for us. Um, so we feel like we have a lot of strong suit, a strong, some, strong suit to build on, um, and we hope to go even further. Um, we have planned some opportunities for improvement, um, just some better academic monitoring, taking a look at what's there, what the teachers are teaching, how the students learn. Um, making sure our standards are aligned, that's something that has been really important. You know, I just explained to you how we have the check-in standards and we need to make sure that we are teaching those standards during that time period. Um, and so that's taken, you know, as I've been creating assessments this year, I've been taking a look at the pacing guides and kind of having conversations with Dr. Perkins. On how we can change this and make sure it fits. And so hopefully by the end of the year, we we've had the time to go through the entire process and everything will be aligned the way it should be.
Let me ask a question before we get into this. When is the next one for the, going to be available?
So there is a check-in window right now for, for K eight, for three eight. So they are completing that check-in before Christmas and then there'll be another one in this spring.
Okay, but I mean, when will we get this data for that?
After the new year, we'll come back and I'll make sure um I'll schedule a time with Dr. Roseberry, we'll sit down and we'll look at that data and then I'll come back to you again. There won't be as much of a gap this time to come back and bring that predict it.
Right.
So right now, we're finishing with this, a check-in B is what we call it, check-in B. So the everybody three through twelve should have completed a check-in B by next Friday.
Do we have last year's data? So can we, the next time, just presumably, look at last year's compared to this year, so we can see if there is growth?
Well, you have to remember it's different cohort of children, so you're gonna be comparing how well the teachers taught that.
I, well, I understand that, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'd like to look at. Last year, we were at thirty-eight percent and this year we're forty-two, so we're moving in the right direction, or vice versa.
And something else we we have taken a look at in the past too, and I know uh Mr. Almond is always gonna do a job of leading us, leading us in that direction, is just looking at that cohort data. So taking a look at what third grade was two years ago and then what they were at fourth grade, where they were fifth grade, and we hope to see, you know, that, that increasing in proficiency. So just making sure that we're not losing a grade level somewhere, we want everybody to be aggressive.
Doctor Blaine, do you have a question?
It was along those same lines, trying to look at comparisons from last year to this year, just to kind of see where we are as far as teaching the standards. Uh, because I remember back in the spring during one of our school visits, there was a principal who was raving about the, the reading, language arts curriculum, how it was gonna improve test scores. And so, yeah, candor, and so as we're looking at, we're gonna have a decision to make about the math curriculum, whether we stick with it or we change it. And so I think looking at that information will be helpful as well.
Um, so we have cleaned up the one-stop shop for their um. I totally just lost everything right there. The one-stop shop where their curriculum guides are, their pacing guides, things like that, we have cleaned that up. Um, so that it's easy for them to understand, they've got all of their resources right there and workloads together, I'm sorry. Um, we have restructured the high school math blocks to include reteaching and review. Because if you think back to those math one scores that you just saw, something should be changed immediately. You know, we need, we need to put something in place to, to lift those up. Um, so we talked to the, the staff there about restructuring that, um, doing a flex schedule, um, and adding some reteaching in there. The other thing we really need to remember is that we need calculator active practice. If students get to use their calculators on these tests, then we need to make sure they know how to use their calculators and they're getting to practice with them on a regular basis. And you may think, you know, that's, that's common sense, but sometimes, you know, a teacher is really focused on getting them to understand the math. We just need to remember to put calculators in their hands and make sure they know how to use them. So our next steps, um, that fifty percent club, we really hope to see a sixty percent club this time. That's our goal, we just wanna continue aiming upward. Um, our high school, we have also um created some math one tutoring and a flex time within the bound schedule during the day. So it's not like an after-school tutoring, students have to attend or they're missing something to come to this. Um, so that, that, we have kind of closely monitored that, make sure it gets started at the high school. Um, we have finally been able to hear, hire a math teacher at the high school for that math one course. Um, so he has started and um he is doing a co-teaching model with N C V P S, which is the virtual public school. Um, we have a couple of people taking um advantage of that opportunity this year and it's working out really well for them. Um, teachers are continuing to send home uh basic practice for the basic skills that they need to know, things like multiplication and close value are very important. And so they're sending home extra skill practices for those. Um, we are utilizing I Ready for personalized pathways, assigned lessons and those common, common formative assessments that I've been creating. And we are utilizing the N C D P I question stems for including reading comprehension alignment. So hopefully they'll, they'll be getting some question stems that better match what they'll see on those check-ins and E O Gs. All right, and I'll stop there and see if you had any further questions about um, about the data review tonight. Okay, um, I just want to switch gears just a second and tell you about a testing update that came down this year from D P I. Um, this year, D P I is allowing schools to retest within the five to ten day testing window for any student who is not proficient. So in the past, they would have an exam, um, and they would wait until, you know, so in the fall, they would take their exam. If they weren't proficient, they had to wait all the spring, they had to come back to summer school and then retest in the summer. Okay, so students in the spring, if they were not proficient on their E O G, they had to come back to summer school, get some remediation before they could retest again. So D P I has opened it up this year. Um, they are allowing testing within our regular testing window. And this means that we will test at the beginning, so a high school E O C has a five-day window that we have to complete our exam again. So we are testing the first couple of days of the window, we're gonna remediate there in the middle and then we're gonna retest at the end before they go home for freshman. Um, with exception of English two, because those scores will not be back in. Um, with the exception of English two, because those scores will not be back in for January, so we will retest them in January. No, you're good, you're good.
Will there be an opportunity to do a quick little retake in January?
Oh, yes. They're still allowing us a set amount of days to remediate before we retest. They're gonna, they're gonna look at the day that our last score comes in, because those English two scores come in one at a time and then we might get fifteen the next day. It's just really wacky. So the day that we get our last score in, I think they're giving us like four days to remediate and then we will test again.
So we're testing earlier.
Early in the window. It still has to be the last five days of the semester.
But I mean, you may lose four days of teaching before testing earlier. Yeah, so that's just a change. That's what it works on.
And we and we do test right there in the middle of that window anyway, just because if a student is absent, we still have to get them in here in that window. And we don't wanna test them on Friday. Um, so they don't have a chance to come back in and and make up that test. So we are testing in the beginning, remediating in the middle, and then retesting at the end. Um, and with this, um, if the retest score is higher than the initial test score, it will be used for achievement calculations and growth analysis. We have developed uh an EOC and EOG testing schedule, just like I told you. So in the past, um, I think it was, it it counted towards achievement but not growth. Now this year they're actually turning it in, counting achievement and growth on that. So they got a lot of feedback last year from schools um and and changed that up. And I I feel like it would be beneficial for us.
What's that do for summer school though?
And and across the state, it comes down to a budget issue.
Yes.
There there's hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent on summer school that school systems don't have. So that's why they were pushing to get these retesting, this retesting done back in the window.
Any other question? Alright, so now we will move on to educational services and we will have Dr. Mason gonna present the AIG plan.
We are going to talk about um AIG updates and um talk about the the updated plan. This is not gonna be long, we're we're gonna make this really brief. So we are um changing the plan a little bit. Um, and we're talking about advancing equity in um different identification. We are moving to universal screening and breaks um two and four. We're gonna use local norms to increase fairness, flexible achieving, aptitude pathways, and staff training to recognize first the potential. We are advancing equity um. Strengthening instructional practices, district-wide focus on differentiation. AIG specialist collaboration with teachers, rigorous, relevant learning experiences and enrichment extension and accelerating opportunities. So we really want to make sure that we are focusing on the instructional practices in terms of differentiation and looking at how we can reach all learners. Professional learning and capacity building, TV on fairness and identification, again differentiation and gifted characteristics, training on updated referral identification processes, coaching and TLC collaboration, support for AIG credentialing and teaching leadership. Yeah, already with our um AIG students and other students in our schools, it's kind of, I mean, within the enrichment piece, uh, we are already doing like our science fair right now is going on in our schools. Um, the district school science fair, we're gonna do like a mock version because those winners will go into UNC Pembroke to do the regional science fair. Uh, after that, we'll do our district spelling bee um at the high school. And then whoever wins that, then they go into the regional, um, and it's at the Carolina Pantry Stadium, so that's awesome. We also have our Battle of the Books with our students and the Math Olympics. So those are big things that we're already doing for our students, but we just wanna figure out ways to, if we're strengthening our instructional practices with our teacher, with our teachers and um. Yeah, just making sure that we're giving high quality instruction. Um, I know we want to make sure we're identifying students, but just to make sure that the rigor is happening all the time in our classroom. So the professional learning is a piece of our AIG plan. Uh, we wanna make sure that, again, that we are um coaching and supporting um AIG. And we wanna make sure that we have partnerships to support AIG learning and the program founder. So when we, when we talk about partnerships, we talk, we're thinking about stakeholders. So we're thinking about parents and family partnerships and how we get the community engaged. And we really want to reach, you know, um, some of our underrepresented populations. Um, when we talk about um looking at AIG, we we look at, you know, twice exceptional. We look at um uh students that are Hispanic, we look at students that are black, and we look at um some of those underrepresented populations um in terms of AIG and how we can best serve, and that means bringing in the community, bringing stakeholders. Um, talking to parents and building that partnership um for um like it says here, academic, intellectual, social, and emotional needs. Collaboration with the district and families, partnership with the community organizations. Like Ms. Hamilton said, we're working with um UNCP, we're working with um MCC, we're working um with these partnerships that are outside of the district to ensure that we are identifying academically gifted students, academically and intellectually gifted students. Um, community involvement, Math Olympics, STEM Olympics, um Battle of the Books, and our science fairs. And we work on internships, enrollment, early college opportunities, same pants, advanced learning pathways, and we want to continue to broaden this area. So based off um the demographics, we've got forty-four percent identified white students, two percent black students, and nine percent are black students. Forty-four, forty-four percent are white students, two percent are black students, and nine percent are Hispanic students. Um, so we've got some work to do. And um the area of identification. Just right here.
Based on what we have have identified at this point in time.
Yes, sir. And that's based off the, that's based off the demographics of teens that are identified in our demographics.
And share with the board what Gray know that we will only identify.
So we're looking, so previously we were looking, the there was four in fourth and eighth grade. But now we are moving to second and fourth grades. And so this is going to help us to be able to identify early learners and some of those underrepresented parents.
Just because you're going from fourth to eighth grade to second to fourth grade, eliminating eighth grade.
Yes, and 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 this is um, I've I've talked to um other districts and talked to other colleagues. And this is, this is pretty standard for teenagers. Eighth grade is is kind of late, so we need to get, we need the early identification. What's the universal screening review? So we, so it's it's a blend. Um, we've got that in universal screening, but that's not necessary always. Um, universal screeners is basically up to the district and what we want to use. We can use um test scores, uh, we can use um differentiating data to provide us with that. Um, but we are looking to use, at least for secondary, that COGAP. It's expensive. So that's why we're kind of um maybe looking at the, got universal screen or COGAP for secondary. And then using universal screeners, um, differentiating universal screeners for fourth grade. We're still up in the air with that. Um, and and it depends on what we can do financially. Um, I've spoken to um several districts and what we can do in terms of universal screening. So we have an idea, we have, we have a good plan moving forward in how to address this.
If you're looking at that, I would, um, because you mentioned you do enrollment, I would make sure that you look at those um those guidelines because there are strict guidelines on what they can and can't accept. So that they can take classes early and they're very strict on that, that it's gotta be all, it can't just be one area. And so it's gotta be standardized plus on that. So just if you're gonna use that as something, and I, Dr. Blair may be able to speak to that too, um, but.
What do we use? Which is what? Standardized thing.
That's that's universal.
But only certain people are allowed to take it?
Well, we screen them, all second grade students should take the COGAP.
What was the practice before? Did we screen all? So so there was, there was some discrepancies and we're trying to move to change that and make sure that we are identifying all the children who are underrepresented.
So we were screening some, but those practices and we screened all their second graders and eighth graders and all their fourth graders. And then the Keno Ohio's core, sometimes they're invited back for reteach, to be able to hear the score.
They don't have a reteach recommendation.
No. No, and and so when when we look at this information, we can take, just like we would for like UC or other areas, we use multiple data points. And that's what we're using for this too. Um, we can use COGAP, that is one area that we can screen universally. But we can use other things too that that can allow us to identify um children for AIG, if not just the COGAP.
I don't put words in anybody's mouth, but I'm trying to understand what words. We were using COGAP based on test scores and those that tested well, then they graduate to take the COGAP or?
So, and I think those are, those are rarely questions. I don't, I I would have to get back to you on that. I would have to get back to you on all, what was used before?
The the next question I have is. The test, we're not testing everybody until yet now. Is that what you're saying?
We're going to.
I know, but we have not been in the past, right?
I will say that a discrepancy came about with that and that. That allowed us to kind of investigate some more, to kind of see how will we identify the children. So we got some help from DPI about how can we ensure that our, what we have in our plan is actually worth happening in our district. And the recommendation is to be sure that you screen all second graders and all fourth graders is a common question.
Before, we would just screen fourth graders and then eighth graders, right? So is it gonna cost more to do everybody or not?
So we're shifting.
How much?
We're shifting to second.
Right, right, I understand that. My question is, how much more is it gonna cost to do?
We will get that cost back to you while we have a question there. So that would be one of the questions that the board has, is how much will it cost this one now? For the fourth graders and what is the timeline for the spring?
Right now.
Well, so right now, if we were to only do the second grade, we have like two hundred and some second graders. Now, if we add fourth grade, that's another two hundred something students, altogether four hundred. So total, it's gonna cost about eight thousand dollars.
Right now, y'all bring up so much money a year, I have to remember, get federal, save, and get them out. Right.
Right.
Are we spending it on AIG now or are we using it for whatever program?
No, we we can't legally do that.
No, um, no, I mean, you're stretching this out over here somewhere, right?
So. But here.
We already implemented AIG now.
Here's the caveat to that. There's, there's some wiggle room.
Yeah.
And financial and where we can pull money from. So there's, there's federal money, but there's also what I, what I talked about earlier. You don't have to absolutely use COGAP testing or universal screening. I mean, use other things and many districts do that too. Um, so we have to be flexible with our money, we have to look at what we can utilize um for the universal screening. So many, most, most school districts use COGAP second grade. And then the fourth grade can utilize other data, like your EGCors, um, just, just looking at those, those formal assessments. So we have wiggle room and we also have um to look at the federal money when we're, when we're talking about the the testing. No, we would, we can't, we can't use AIG money for other purposes.
I know, you can justify it, you know, using it how you want.
No, I, we would have to use AIG money for AIG.
How much?
But have we done that in the past?
I can't speak on that.
So we need to investigate the budget, how we can utilize in our plan.
There's been very little funding for AIG in the past. Under that for fact. How how mu, it, we've been very little with AIG in the past. How much money do, are we getting now for AIG? How much of it's federal, how much of it's state?
And I can, I can come up with some figures for you. Um, I don't have that in this presentation.
Do we have any grant money or is it all straight federal?
We could get, and it's great, is to run the numbers, we can bring the team, we'll bring the team back up. And we will make sure that you all know how much it costs, what it, what that money has gone towards in the past. And then how we're going to revise our AIG plan for to ensure that the money is being used strictly for AIG. So those are questions that I don't think they were prepared.
And we are, we are aware of some of the deficits that happened in the past. And that's why we're building a new AIG plan to help um move forward in the best interest of the students for a better AIG plan. That's why we're coming to this. Okay. I understand.
You don't know.
AIG money cannot be used for anything else but AIG.
I know what you're saying, but I, I, I know it was to help me in the past.
Well, I don't know what happened in the past and if I use AIG money, but I can tell you here and now, we will not be using AIG money for anything else but AIG. That that's what it's gonna go for.
And I, I would like to break down how much is federal, how much is state, how much is grant, or federal grant money? Because now you gotta be very careful how you word certain things or you gonna lose a federal grant. Didn't we just lose one, but there's some of. Didn't we just lose one, but there's some of the stuff that we had in there?
So that, that's what they're working on, the recreation.
Right.
So they're gonna use the language fairness and identification.
Right.
And if you look at the last bullet point for program accountability, we have to have your approval to resubmit the plan. So we do need y'all to say, yes, would you like for us to resubmit the plan? Because we need to resubmit a plan that has the items in there that are currently existing.
You don't, you need it tonight.
You all need to know whether or not.
We need you to approve this plan tonight so that we can go in and we can move forward with us, with D P I and get our funding for AIG, yes.
We need it, and this is gonna be done afterwards, or we need to do this right now or after close?
We need approval to rewrite.
No, I, I understand that, I'm asking, you need a motion now or after close?
We need a motion, so they have it documented, we are recommitting.
Before that, I do have a question. On the professional learning and capacity building slide, you talk about PD and training for teachers. Will you two be going in to model and co-teach differentiated instructions for teachers?
So this, this is a multi-passed approach. Um, we can bring in people that, um, can train specifically for this and we always, we're always working on the fine tuning. We're always working on core, this, I mean, this is something that we do as a district all the time with.
The, the modeling of the lessons and the co-teaching?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we're constantly doing. But.
The D P I can, you know, determine and support us with that.
We do have, we do have a D P I team that is ready to, um, help facilitate, um, anything very targeted that we need.
And will that happen during the school day or will teachers be required to stay after hours for additional P D?
Typically, what we do is we try to facilitate, um, professional development training like this that may require a whole day, maybe like a workday. And we tried to schedule those, um, so the teachers don't have to put in like extra time. Most times it's facilitated.
Or like at a first? Like at a faculty meeting or something that we've, that we've already accounted for time?
Yeah, I need, I need a motion now. I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to recommit the AIG plan with a second from Ms. Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you to the board.
So now we will go to Dr. Rose Brown, who are the superintendent of late. Of course, had a lot of good questions.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is just a few of our semester highlights, um, since I have taken on the mantle of being the superintendent for Montgomery County Schools. So this is just a review of several things that have already occurred, um, this half of the school year. And so I would say right now with our student services, with students being the center of everything that we do, uh, we have put a heavy emphasis on making sure that we're elevating and supporting every learner, um, in our district. Our principals are currently and still, they're working on refining the level behavior matrix that has interventions and, um, equitable consequences. And that just means that we have, we're doing, we're looking at it from a fairness standpoint based off of the age of hopefulness of the student. Um, we're looking at having district-wide, um, making sure that we have district discipline hearings in place for our, for our students before they come to the board. Being proactive for problem solving, uh, those issues with families. And we have established that. Um, and if there is a conflict between the student and whoever the employer is, you know, the discipline, then we make sure we have an impartial party to hear that discipline. We've, um, delivered crisis response training for the district, we've trained our staff on behavior threat assessment. Uh, today, um, Maddie and, uh, Dr. Cagel, we also provided the staff with a video, like that Maddie produced about our standard treatment protocol that goes out to schoolwide and district-wide so that we have the same common message when we're presenting, um, to staff, so that staff uses the same type of common messaging. When they answer the phones as well as when there is an alert and it's very clear and concise. So we now use terms such as cold, secure, lockdown, evacuated. Very clear succinct messaging by all staff, no more bluebirds, red birds, there's an emergency red card, you know, green card, we don't do those things anymore. We have transformed across the state. And I think it was said earlier that now, uh, the, the Center for Safer Schools is under, uh, the F B I supervision instead of the Department of Public Instruction. Um, so we have rolled out the I love you guys model. And we have asked all of our schools when they return in January that they will go over their red safety boulders with all staff so that they are all on the same page and they have our contact information. They also know who is a part of the district crisis team. With leadership, uh, with our staff, students and family community engagement. Um, as you know, we had our first convocation. We've got, it had been a number of years since we have brought staff together to celebrate the kickoff of the school year. We've hosted our inaugural faith-based breakfast to strengthen community partnerships. We launched a new family community engagement newsletter to keep families informed and connected. And we also, uh, launched a Second Steps guidance curriculum that's called Second Step to help our students with their social and emotional, uh, growth. In terms of curriculum instruction, um, Mr. Almond and his team have been very instrumental in the establishment of our high school coordination meetings because we don't have anyone that necessarily oversees secondary. We need over at the high school to meet, uh, with our traditional high school, uh, to make sure that they stay on track with certain mandates that are coming out, but most importantly, to talk about curriculum and instruction. Uh, you also witnessed the new early graduation process tonight. Uh, we have a district registration timeline that we've been working on, um, where we will have some programming put in place for district-wide enrollment kickoff. So we do plan on having a family night in January to kick off pre-k and kindergarten enrollment in a central location. And then families will be bound out to their schools in which they are residential to. And we will also launch our STEM education initiative, um, on that night in January. We're conducting our quarterly reviews, we've implemented our curriculum walkthroughs with the monitoring emphasis on fidelity of instructional resources and practices. So we're looking at how are we actually implementing those things that AIG should have invested in. Also, the observation feedback learning walks, um, are in place. Uh, we're finishing up, we have our last learning walk tomorrow at Troy Elementary. Um, and providing teachers with that timely feedback so they know which areas to shun in and what areas they need to continue to, um, look at as opportunities for improvement. Um, in terms of leadership, listening, learning and reading, uh, we're going to continue, especially in the second half of the year, continue to do our school site group because of the district office staff. Uh, we do have one-on-one meetings with principals and central office leaders to build trust and alignment. We've launched our leadership newsletter, Mr. Almond sent that out in Friday. Uh, it's just a lot of work by all of us, but we're getting it, we're getting it out to our, uh, to our faculty and staff members so that they actually know what's going on in the district. We also have formed a new family community advisory, uh, to elevate diverse voices, um, from the field. We also have partnered with our county commissioners for the faith-based breakfast to give them, uh, specific collaboration and partnership on career commitment to high schools for more communities that work is continuing. And, um, we are continuously working on, um, how we can let you do some work stations in during the course of the school year with the board for transparency and collaboration. So looking ahead, we want to continue to build the momentum with a focus on student achievement, staff support, community trust, focus on teachers, recruitment and retention and well-being, and expand family engagement, curriculum innovation and leadership development. And even though we're at the close of this half of the year, uh, we will be shutting down some of our professional development. Now, because we want our teachers to be able to refine their, their practice this half of the year. Some of the professional development is ongoing, especially with mathematics. That is something that we just got to continue to hit those touchpoints, um, with our teachers in the area of math. But we are hoping to slow down the second half of the year, um, be respectful of everyone's time and to be sure that they can focus on working on the work. Um, in terms of the calendar, um, and during the month of July, um, I'm going to talk with the staff about July is sacred. If we go with the modified calendar, that means whatever we need to get in, we need to get it in in June. Or we need to wait until they come back in August. But July is gonna try to make sure that that is sacred for both of us that are twelve months. We will probably start our leadership academy the fi- the last week of July to give us enough time. Um, looking ahead, really big projects that we're focused on, we've gotta focus on right-sized staffing and allotments for sustainability and getting our budget together. Um, we've got to have a coordinated budget workshop, uh, with our county commissioners so they know what's in it as well. Uh, we've got to continue to improve our safety infrastructure district-wide. I heard some of you ask questions about the cameras. We need to be able to see our cameras from our phone wherever we are. Um, because there's so much going on right now in terms of school safety. And people need to be able to get to their students and contact emergency management very quickly without hesitation. We don't have that capability, um, right now to be able to speak in acting our camera system from our phones. We have to put our computers to download that. And then developing a three to five-year technology plan and designing a five-year facility needs plan. And those are things that Mr. Hines and Mr. Minge are currently, uh, putting in place. So those are all of our first semester highlights. Um, as you can see, we've been very, very busy, it is a collective effort. I mean, I do wanna thank all the staff members for your help and your support with doing a lot of this heavy lifting work. We still have so much more to do, but we were kicking, long was not built overnight, so it's just gonna take time. So thank you so much.
I have a question. Put down our, um, five-year strategic plan. I know we're in the process of getting that together and we will be launching that in January. And we will be showing that with everyone publicly in January when we return our first quarter. Thank you for asking.
At this point, we'll be moving into closed session. And of course, with the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot eleven, the board will now enter a closed session for the following permitted purposes. To discuss confidential personnel matters and to consult with legal counsel regarding any matter protected under attorney-client privilege. These discussions are necessary to protect the privacy of individuals and to observe the legal interests of the board. A motion to enter closed session is now in order and the specific statutory stipulations will, of stipulations will be recorded in the meeting next.
The move.
Motion, Diana Second. All in favor?
Uh, uh.
Welcome back. We're in open session. The first action item that we need is the first read for policy 1740 all the way through policy 7425. Do I have a motion?
A move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. We then move to our consent agenda and we will be approving the meeting minutes from November 3rd, the December personnel report, and the field trip request. Do I have a motion?
A move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our last is the budget amendment that Ms. Hales presented. I'm so sorry. Ms. Brady, budget amendment two, section B. Do I have a motion?
A move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now a motion to withdraw.
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.